Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Sunshine notice, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, December 15, 2020. The time is now 7:04. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in November 28, 2019, issues of The Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and The Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, the public meeting for the remainder of the year 2020 have been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meetings until further notice. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners meeting and participate during the designated public comment portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in numbers provided on the township website. Commissioner Kelly is absent excused. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Tucci?
Here.
All present mayors except for Commissioner Kelly, he's absent excuse this evening.
Thank you so much. I see we have minutes, we have open session minutes for November 17, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
And then I see we have executive session minutes for September 15, 2020, October 20, 2020, November 5, 2020, November 17, 2020, and December 1, 2020. Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
I accept for November 17, where I was absent excused.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Mayor Tucci?
I accept for October 20.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications or correspondence?
Lady, do we have any communications?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mayor. I thought you were asking.
That's quite all right.
We have no, no, we do not.
We have no proclamations this evening. We'll get into reports. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of November.
Commissioner Petracca? And I have a shade tree report for the month of November. Bills, please.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for December 15, 2020. Public Affairs, $259,805.84. Revenue and Finance, $2,688,513.98. Public Safety, $43,772.81. Public Works, $75,780.17. Parks and Public Property, $204,647.17. Water Utilities, $79,351.51. Payroll for December 11, 2020, regular payroll, $913,488.7. Overtime payroll, $45,609.60. COVID overtime payroll, $32,994.71. Total payroll, $992,092.38. For a grand total of $4,343,323.16.
Move the bills.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Mayor Tucci?
Hi.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. We will now entertain public comment on agenda items only.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed by the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. There's no one there.
There's no one there? Thank you very much. Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Scarpelli?
I have none, Mayor.
Mr. Petracca?
I don't really have an announcement, but I just want to say that at our holiday tree lighting this year, first of all, I'm a big traditional guy in Nutley, and I swept Christmas tree while this time. I actually said to Sam Corolla, did somebody lose their mind? I said, I hate the way that looks, but of course, it was during the day. But I have to tell you, when we lit it up, it is magnificent. It really looks great. You know, we saved the turf by doing that as well. And a lot of people have been commenting, even though we did it on Zoom. I was in Center Ridge the other day, old grabbed me and said, you know what, they're so happy to see that we're continuing to try to do some things to make people feel good during this virus. So I have to say kudos to your department. Mayor, the Oval looks great. I really like it a lot. So do a lot of other people.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
I just was going to echo that I thought the tree lighting ceremony was really great. It was very thoughtful. I think well done, as well as the Santa drive-by. I think all of these things that we're doing to keep the spirit of traditions alive and well in Nutley, I think are really well. And I just really want to shout out to the resident on King Street who sent me a Christmas card. It was very thoughtful. It's the first one I've gotten in 18 years. So as the Reverend Finance Commissioner, so taking my picture off the tax bill probably was a good idea.
Commissioner has a good sense of humor this evening. Thank you. I have a few announcements to make this evening. As was already mentioned, on Monday, December 7, we had our tree lighting, which was virtual, and I have to give a shout out to our OT Wizards, Sal Scarpelli and Jason Kirk for doing such an outstanding job. And on Sunday, this past Sunday, the 13th, we had Santa in front of the middle school with a horse, strong sleigh, and it was just phenomenal. You'd see the smiles on people's faces. It was a mission accomplished. We tried to lift people's spirits at this time of the year under the conditions that we're working under. So I need to say some thank yous to some folks. Number one, the men and women of my Parks Department, they have done a superb job. There's not enough kudos and credit I can give to them, what they've done, what they've done in the mud hole, what they did with the tree, and all the other decorations was phenomenal. I need to thank the Board of Education grounds crew, Timmy and Company, for giving us a big assist. It was phenomenal. All the way everyone worked together really warmed my heart. Our Public Safety Department, our fire, our fire department for putting up the wreaths, our police department for helping out with Santa and the sleigh, our DPW for the guidance that they gave us, because for the Parks Department, we were in uncharted waters. All right, this is the first year the mayor's office in our department. So Joe, thank you and all your people for your help. Public Affairs, Commissioner Kelly for pitching in wherever he could and was always willing to help. Revenue and Finance, I know you were always with us, Tom, and I know there's bills on there tonight. The bills are fine, so thank you very much. So this is, this is what Nutley is about. This is a team effort, all right? And, you know, I was speaking with Commissioner Scarpelli before the meeting started, and naturally, the children driving by would see Santa and the sleigh were smiles from ear to ear. Even some of the grumpier, older people who were coming by, who were a little tentative and smiling, by the time they got to Santa, were smiling like unbelievably. So again, mission accomplished. Thank you, everyone, for all of your, all of your help. Without everyone's help, it wouldn't have been as successful as both events were. Commissioner Kelly's also asked me to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. He's on active duty in the military. I think he's compliant to his computer. I'm not exactly sure what that setup is, but it's the military and he's doing his duty. So Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays from Commissioner Kelly. I was also on a call this morning with county executive and the governor's office relative to the COVID vaccinations, which will start next week at 2:35, Prospect Avenue in West Orange, at the former Kmart building. And towns that will be participating at this site are West Orange, Cedar Grove, Essex Falls, Montclair, Newark, Nutley, and Verona. And the first folks to get the shots will be our first responders and those in nursing homes. They're also soliciting people to volunteer, all right, because they need people to help them with some administrative duties. And they're also looking for folks with medical backgrounds, either nursing or some other type of medical background, to volunteer and to help out. I also have to have another shout out this evening to Tom McHenry. Congratulations, Tom, on being the Giblin Association awardee for the Community Prestige Award that happened this past Sunday, for all you do, not only for Nutley, but throughout the county, it's throughout the state. So thank you, Tom. And in conclusion, I just want to wish everyone all the happiness and blessings and magic of this season, no matter what you celebrate. If you celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, or any other festive type occasion you want to celebrate, enjoy yourself. We're under difficult times right now, but we will get through this. Nutley is Nutley because of what everyone in this town does and how everyone pitches in. And I'm just so proud to be able to serve here with my fellow commissioners. So happy holidays to everyone. And that's it for Commissioner announcements. We have no ordinances this evening, nothing to be introduced, nothing on second hearing, but we do need a short executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to go into close. Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975 permits exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley to move into closed session to discuss contract negotiations, be a further resolved at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Mayor Tucci?
Hi.
The time is 7:15.
We're back on the record? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We will now move into resolutions. Commissioner Pacheco, will you read Commissioner Kelly's resolution?
I sure will. Whereas the English settlement in North America were in a tiny fringe along the seaboard, as settlement pushed west into the interior, the institution of the milita- military, which colonists brought with them from England went with them. Whereas the National Guard's oldest regiments met the first year old on the Village Green in Salem, Massachusetts. They were barely three months old, organized on December 13th, 1636, the date we now celebrate as the National Guard's birthday. Whereas the military tradition meant citizens organized themselves into military units responsible for their own defense, organizing in the military and regiments increased its efficiency and responsiveness, which proved critical for the defense of their communities. Its oldest units like the one pictured above are the oldest units in the United States military and among the oldest military units in the world. Whereas the military called, called the National Guard since 1916 has served community, state, and nation for nearly 400 years, and citizen soldiers have fought in every major American conflict from 1613, 1637 to present-day operations of Afghanistan and Iraq. Much changed since the first mustard. Whereas from the revolution of the Civil War to the World Wars to the present day, the township and not least thankful for the and is proud to support the United States National Guard on the occasion of the National Guard's 384th birthday. The township remembers those who have sacrificed to serve their nation in the National Guard and thanks and recognizes the National Guard veterans who call Nutley home today. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township and county of Estes State in New Jersey recognizes and celebrates the United States National Guard on its 384th birthday. I proudly move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. Commissioner, would you like to continue with your own resolution?
If I could find them, let's see. Wow. You have a lot tonight, Commissioner. Okay. Be resolved by Township and County of Estes State in New Jersey as follows. The Township Nutley is authorized and to accept this award grant from the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Office of Attorney General in the amount of $32,400 under the Safe and Secure Communities Program Grant Number 21-0716 with a match. Fringe benefits for a total project cost of $32,400. Mayor Moro G. Tucci and the Chief Thomas Sterling Jr. authorized to execute and the and the township clerk to attest to the sub-grant award in connection with the grant and any and all documents in connection with the grant. The township of Nutley is accepting the grant of funds for the purpose described in the application, subword period of August first, two thousand twenty to July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one asserted a copy of this resolution shall be provided by the office of township clerk to each of the following. Mayor Moro Tucci Township Attorney, Chief Financial Officer, Police Department, State of New Jersey Office Attorney General and Office of Attorney General, Department of Law and Public Safety. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Whereas NJSA eight nine dash four one requires the Emergency Management Council to be formed to coordinate all disaster control activities on behalf of the Township of Nutley County, State of New Jersey. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex, New Jersey that the following be appointed as Emergency Management Council, Local Emergency Planning Council, Environmental Commission on behalf of Township of Nutley, January first, two thousand twenty-one to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. William Cassidy, Emergency Management Coordinator, Fox phone Deputy Coordinator Fire and Rescue, Dave Hollywood Deputy Coordinator Emergency Public Information Communications, Don Santangelo, Department, um, excuse me, Deputy Coordinator, Evacuation Coordinator, Anthony Santoro, Hazardous Materials Coordinator, William Von Roth, Radiology Protection, Jason Kirk, Alert and Warning Coordinator, Salvatore Ferrari Damage Assessment Coordinator, Dave Berry Code Enforcement Assessment Team Member, Thomas Malone Emergency Operations Center Coordinator, Amo Pugliese Emergency Medical Coordinator, Thomas Strumel, Law Enforcement Coordinator, Thomas Ristano, Public Health Coordinator, Michael Luzi, Public Works Coordinator, Frank DeMaya, Resource Management Coordinator, Anthony Gagliardo, DeBreeze Man- Management Coordinator, Daniel Jacoby Shelter and Catherine Carmichael, Social Services Coordinator. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas NJSA forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven provides for the Director of Division Local Government Services may be approved. Insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and amount thereof was determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. And whereas the director may also approve insertion of any item appropriation for equal amount. Now therefore, it be resolved that Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, of Essex County, New Jersey, hereby request that Director of Division Local Service, Government Services to approve insertion event, an item of revenue in the budget of the two thousand twenty, sum of eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents, which item is now available as revenue from National Priority Safety Program Grant pursuant to provisions of the statute. Be further resolved that like sum of eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents being the same as hereby appropriated under the caption, General Appropriations, Section Three, be further resolved that the above is result of revenue available from the Municipal Alliance Grant Program. Be further resolved that the municipal matching share for municipal alliance grant program is an amount of two hundred and four dollars and sixty cents and is included in two thousand twenty adopted budget in accordance with the grant agreement and is hereby approved appropriate appropriated for the said purpose. Be further resolved that township clerk forward one certified copy of this resolution to Director of Local Government Services. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. And that's all I have, Mayor. Maybe it'll be an early night for me. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars per block ninety-six oh two, lot nine, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Mrs. Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas there exists the need for the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley for legal counsel to advise and represent the township in specialist special matters, uh, including but not limited to compliance and procedural issues involving Open Public Records Act, uh, Oprah, and Open Public Meetings Act and other general legal matters as may be determined and directed by the Township Attorney. Whereas the above needs are for certain specified professional services to be rendered or performed by persons, uh, person or persons authorized by law to practice or recognize profession whose practice is regulated by law within the meaning of NJSA twenty-eight colon eleven dash one, uh, as amended. Whereas the performance of said professional service requires, uh, knowledge of advance of an advanced type in the field of, of learning acquired by prolonged formal course of specialized training study as distinguished from general academic instruction or apprenticeship and training. Whereas funds are available for this account, for this purpose from account, uh, one oh one, one oh, oh, one, two, two oh five, subject to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one, uh, budget. Whereas services rendered pursuant to the resolution shall not exceed sixty-five thousand dollars in the aggregate. Whereas Inglisino Webster Wiskala and Taylor has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification and certifies that they have not made any disqualifying reportable contributions to a political candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year as, as that would violate NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty dot five or the township's local pay-to-play ordinance adopted by referendum. Whereas the local public contracts law NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash one, as amended, requires that this resolution be publicly advertised. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in accordance, accordance with local public contracts while hereby authorizing approves the award of a professional services contract to the firm of Inglisino Webster Wiskala Taylor LLC pursuant to non-fair and open process in accordance with the provisions of NJSA of nineteen forty-four A twenty dot five as legal counsel in accordance with a contractual professional services, which shall provide that the legal counsel or any attorney on staff shall be paid an hourly rate of two hundred and fifteen dollars for legal services, an hourly rate of one hundred dollars for services performed by a paralegal or law clerk. Further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer has executed a certification of funds for the contract that and that sufficient funds will be available for said contract through, uh, the twenty-one municipal budget. Further resolved that the service of pursuant shall not exceed, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars in the aggregate. Further resolved that the anticipated term is twelve months, beginning January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Further resolved that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute seal and deliver said contract for professional services on behalf of and in the name of the township. And further resolved that the business entity disclosure certification, the business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with this resolution. Further resolved for the copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within ten days of its passage, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a registered municipal accountant to conduct an annual audit of township's books, accounts, and financial transactions inclusive of the Nutley Public Library within five months after the close of its fiscal year as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA nineteen forty-four A twenty dot four and twenty dot five as appropriate. Whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for one year will exceed thirty thousand dollars. The anticipated term is one year, uh, beginning January one through, uh, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Whereas Nizivachi LLP Certified Public Accounts and Consultants, Two Hundred Valley Road, Suite Three Hundred, Mount Arlington, New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule totaling one hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents for providing such services. Whereas, uh, Nizivachi LLP has certified public accounts and consultants, has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any disqualifying reportable contributions or political to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas funds are avail- available from account one oh one, two 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 oh five in the amount of ninety-five thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and twelve cents and account one oh five, seven oh six, two oh five in the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, the second account is actually for the library, uh, is it's, it's, it's the, a split of the total amount. Uh, and these will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one budget. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, uh, that we authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Nizivachi LLP Certified Public Accounts and Consultants to provide the above services. Be further resolved in business entity disclosure certification, determinative value of value be placed on file with this resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Uh, the next ordinance is, uh, next resolution is three oh two twenty. Uh, this, uh, is, uh, a required, uh, of service requirement from, uh, using, uh, what's their name? NW Financial Group in Hoboken, and the amount of the fee is for fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, and, uh, its funds are available for this. And this is because of a, an SEC ruling that an independent third party has to look at the debt compliance disclosures. So I, um, uh, read in summary that now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. The mayor are authorized and directed to execute an agreement with NW Financial Group, uh, for services of, uh, professional financial audit services in a total amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, the contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon eleven five one A of the local public contracts laws. Notice of this action will be printed once and then at least some legal newspaper, the township, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain the services of an attorney who specializes in municipal land use law and policy to provide legal advice and services for the code enforcement department in connection with the township land use policies and procedures. Whereas NJSA forty-eight, uh, colon eleven dash five, uh, one A, I permits the award of a contract without public bidding. Whereas Angelo Sefeli, escort of the firm of Pyros in Sefeli Paris and Genetempo, uh, three sixty Pesek Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Whereas funds are available on account one oh one, two two six two oh five. It will be certified by Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the two two thousand twenty-one municipal budget. Anticipated term is from January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Whereas Pyros Zena, uh, Sefeli Genetempo has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions or a political or candidate to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year. And that con- that's the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, uh, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Angelo Sefeli, uh, of, uh, the law firm of Pyros in Sefeli Paris and Genetempo as a professional service. Be further resolved, and a copy of this resolution as well as the contract shall be placed on file with the clerk of the township and a notice in accordance with the public contract law of New Jersey and the form subject to, uh, thereto shall be published in the Nutley, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
My next resolution, three oh nine twenty, is, is, uh, same as the previous, uh, uh, resolution with, uh, the firm of Pyros Zena Sefeli Paris and Genetempo. The change is, though, in it is that, uh, this is, uh, the need for a specialized attorney for as municipal tax council to provide, uh, legal services concerning municipal tax appeals of the township, uh, as, as we go through the year. Uh, the contract term is, is January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the same business entity disclosure certifications have been filed by, uh, Pyros Zena Sefeli Paris and Genetempo's firm. Funds are available in one oh one, two oh four, two hundred and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one budget. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor be and his hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Frank Zena of that firm, uh, as a professional service. Be further resolved, a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice in accordance with public contract law of New Jersey and a form attached thereto shall be published in the Nutley sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Murphy issued Executive Order one ninety, which states that no gas, public electric, or public water system shall collect any fee or char- or, or charge imposed for late or otherwise untimely payments. And whereas on November sixth, a clarification of the executive order was issued, clear is clearly states that during the public health emergency penalties or interest cannot be collected on a late or otherwise delinquent water payment from residential accounts or accounts primarily serving residential customers. Whereas Executive Order one ninety goes further by restraining the tax collector from allowing third-party lien holders to pay subsequent charges, uh, during the period covered by the executive order. Uh, whereas subsequent, uh, delinquent water payments with interest have been made on the following accounts, uh, as listed in the resolution. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, the Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund the subsequent water charges in a total amount of three thousand four hundred and eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Bishop Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight, following transfers of appropriations in the two thousand twenty budget be the same are hereby authorized and approved from group insurance five hundred thousand to capital improvement fund five hundred thousand, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Bishop Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas RS forty-eight colon five seventeen allows for cancellation of property tax credits or delinquent, uh, amounts in the amount of, uh, less than ten dollars. Whereas governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action. On their part, any cancellation of property tax credits or delinquencies of less than ten dollars now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissions of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that hereby authorizes the tax collector to cancel said amounts as deemed necessary, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas there exists various, uh, reserves for deposit balances on the books of this special trust fund. Whereas various reserve balances have been inactive and it has been determined that these balances should be canceled. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, following reserve balances, the amount of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents be in and are hereby counseled, uh, canceled, uh, canceled as listed in the, uh, resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight, following cancers of appropriations in the two thousand twenty budget being the same are hereby authorized and approved from municipal elections, forty-five thousands from administration of towns of ordinances, salary and wage nineteen thousand to treasurer's office salary and wage thirty-five thousand, township clerk salary and wage ten thousand, construction code salary and wage nineteen thousand, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Bishop Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli? Thank you, Mayor. Whereas bids for the twenty twenty acceptance of recycling vegetative waste includes leaf and breast hoodies were received and opened on November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Now therefore, we resolve that Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Espa Cundy and Sons not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract with the Township of Nutley, move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. Whereas Wayne DeFeo, DeFeo and Associates, fifteen Washington Valley Road, Warren Township, New Jersey, has been awarded a contract for consultant advice and services to the Department of Public Works, the marketing of recycled materials of the Township of Nutley on June fourth, two thousand twenty by resolution one eighteen dash twenty. Whereas such services have exceeded the original contract in the amount of ninety-nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and were, uh, nine hundred and fifty dollars, excuse me. And, uh, change order has been authorized to increase in the contract amount. Change order number one, Wayne DeFeo provided additional consulting service to review specifications related to marketing of recycled materials that attach a penalty amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars. Whereas funds are available from account number oh oh one, four twenty-four, two oh five, and been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars be and is hereby approved, the move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey that in accordance with the provision of RS forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers appropriation to twenty twenty budget be and the same are hereby authorized approved from water salary and wage one hundred thousand to water other expenses one hundred thousand. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey that in accordance with the provision of RS forty-eight four dash fifty-eight, following transfer of appropriations in the twenty twenty budget be and same are hereby authorized from health insurance sixty thousand to parks, other expenses, shade tree, other expenses, recreation, other expenses and the like amount. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that Maro Tucci and Kathy Repulchevsky be appointed as representatives of community development block grant committee for the term January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Whereas the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJ SA fifty-two colon thirty-four dash six point two C one thirty-nine made by a resolution and without advertising for bid purchase goods or services through the use of a nationally recognized accepted cooperative purchasing program that has been developed utilizing a competitive bidding process by another contracting unit within the state of New Jersey or within any other state when available. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley passed resolution two ninety-five dash nineteen on November eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods or services from approved U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance vendors pursuant to all the conditions of the individual contracts for the year twenty twenty commencing January one, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And whereas the municipal clerk of the Township of Nutley has advertised the township's notice of intent to award a contract under a national cooperative purchasing agreement in the November nineteenth, twenty twenty issue of the Nutley Sun. And whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property intends to purchase one caterpillar model nine thirty wheel loader from Foley Cat eight fifty-five Centennial Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has reached researched front wheel loaders and has determined that the Caterpillar ninety model nine thirty wheel loader based on performance, cost savings, and minimum downtime. And whereas Foley Cat has provided a quote for Caterpillar model nine thirty wheel loader in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. And whereas funds are available in account zero dash zero one five oh four two hundred in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, two forty-five and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the purchasing agent be and she is hereby authorized to purchase Caterpillar model nine thirty wheel loader in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, two forty-five from Foley Cat, who is an approved Omni Partners U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance Cooperative vendor. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Whereas sealed bids received for electrical services on November twenty-four, twenty twenty in the Township of Nutley. And whereas TSUJ Corporation PO Box forty-six twenty-one, Wayne, New Jersey was the low bidder at a rate per hour performance of seventy-nine dollars, journeyman's rate of seventy-five dollars, apprentice rate of twenty-eight dollars. No add-on for materials and no minimum service charge. Whereas the contract is not to exceed ninety thousand dollars and funds are available from account one dash zero one five oh eight two hundred in the amount of forty thousand in capital ordinance thirty-four twenty-five A in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for services contingent upon adoption of the twenty twenty-one budget with an option to extend for one year have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that a contract for electrical services be awarded to TSUJ Corporation PO Box forty-six twenty-one Wayne, New Jersey. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Whereas sealed bids received for recreation uniforms, equipment and supplies on November twenty-four, twenty twenty in the Township of Nutley. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey has determined that a contract for recreation uniforms, equipment, and supplies be awarded to DOT Designing LLC two forty-two Possum Hollow Road, Monroe Township as per the attached sheet not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. Whereas funds are available from accounts T dash twenty-four nine oh nine nine zero one through nine fifteen and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the township clerk be and they are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Whereas sealed bids received for recreation uniforms, equipment, and supplies on November twenty-four, twenty twenty in the Township of Nutley and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, New Jersey has determined that a contract for recreation uniforms, equipment, and supplies be awarded to BSN Sports PO Box forty-nine Jenkentown, PA as per the attached sheet not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Whereas funds are available from accounts T dash twenty-four nine zero nine nine zero one through nine fifteen have been certified by the chief financial officer. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and township clerk be and they are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Whereas a raffle application has been received from the following organization. Unico National Nutley Chapter License Number twenty-nine twenty for an off-premise fifty-fifty cash right raffle on Thursday, February fourth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the aforementioned license is approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the Township of Nutley shall apply for community development block grant monies for the year twenty twenty-one. And whereas public hearings regarding the CBBG program were held on November twenty-third, twenty twenty and December eighth, twenty twenty at which time applications for grants were accepted. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Nutley submits the following application for funding for twenty twenty-one. King Street reconstruction and resurfacing from the Belville border to Union Avenue in the amount of two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Hi.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
Resolution number thirty-one, three twenty-one twenty. I'm deferring this evening, so I will move on to resolution number three twenty-two twenty. And I offer this resolution on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is a resolution authorizing the appointment of DMR Architects PC as consulting professional planner to the Township of Nutley for redevelopment project within the township. Whereas there exists a need by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley for specialized professional planning and consulting services to be rendered by a professional relating to the investigation and redevelopment of property identified as noted in this resolution also known as the Chickolini property. And whereas the aforementioned needs of for certain specified professional services to be rendered and performed by a person or persons authorized by law to practice a recognized profession whose practice is regulated by law within the meaning of NJ SA twenty-eight colon eleven dash one as amended. And whereas the performance of said professional service requires knowledge of an advanced type in a field of learning acquired by a prolonged formal course of specialized training study as distinguished from general academic instruction or apprenticeship and training. Whereas said professional services cannot reasonably be described by written specifications. And whereas funds are available for this purpose in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and a certificate of availability has been or will be filed by the chief financial officer of the township with the township clerk in accordance with local budget law NJ SA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-seven. And whereas the township has been provided with the business entity disclosure of campaign contributions to the firm at least ten days prior here too as required by public law two thousand five C two seventy-one. And whereas DMR, DMR Architects of seven 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 Terrace Avenue, Hasbro Heights, New Jersey has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions to a political candidate or candidate committee in the township the previous one year that would that would violate either NJ SA nineteen colon forty-four eight twenty dash five or the township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance adopted by referendum or any and all relevant executive orders of the New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements. And that the appointment will bar the firm from making any reportable contributions through the term of the appointment. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has reviewed the qualifications of the firm and has deemed them appropriate and acceptable and consistent with the professional planning services required by the Board of Commissioners. And whereas local public contracts law NJ SA forty-eight colon eleven dash one as amended requires that this resolution be publicly advertised. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley as follows. One, the Board of Commissioners in accordance with local public contract law hereby authorizes and approves the appointment of DMR Architects PC as the township's professional planner and consultant in connection with such specialized professional planning services required or desirable for the investigation and redevelopment of the property identified in this resolution. On the official tax map of the Township of Nutley known as the Chickolini redevelopment area in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars pursuant to a non-fair and open process in accordance with the provisions of NJ SA nineteen colon forty-four eight twenty point five. The chief financial officer of the township has executed or will execute a certification of funds for the appointment and that sufficient funds are available for said appointment. Three, the business entity disclosure certification, business entity disclosure of campaign contribution and determination of value shall be placed on file with this resolution. Four, a copy of the resolution or a summary of thereof shall be published within ten days of its adoption or as otherwise required by law. And five, the resolution shall take effect immediately but no sooner than as permitted by law. I move the resolution. Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
That concludes our formal business this evening. We will now open the meeting to the public.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach, should state their name and ask for the record. Unless further time is granted by board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Moore.
Okay. Ms. Tucci, I have a question about the plan that you're speaking of more between Vielen and High Street. I received an open response this week. Is there a plan in place right now or a preliminary plan? Because you had Inglisino as be in charge of the contract that looks like.
Sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying, Mr. Moore. Could you please repeat that for me?
Is there a plan in place or do we have any kind of idea of what the redevelopment will look like between Vielen and High Street?
I know that. No, Mr. Moore. We are in the, we are in the very early steps of the process in declaring it a need, an area in need of redevelopment and rehabilitation. At the appropriate time, we will go out and solicit recommendations, all right, from people that do this type of work, developers, redevelopers, which of course we will lend guidance to as far as what our vision is as a board, all right? But we must also be cognizant of the fact that there are market forces that come and play here. And whenever we move forward with, we want to assure to the best of our ability that is successful.
Is it, is the public going to have any portion to have comment to that before the final solution?
Yes, Mr. Moore. The public, the public is is plugged into the process pretty much every step of the way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Merry Christmas.
Before we move to adjourn. Just one more little piece of business. I'd like to thank Belville Mayor Michael Melham for holding up his end of the Nutley Belville Mayor's Cup Football game relative to the pizza bet that we made. He supplied two pizzas for the Board of Commissioners and we thank you for that and we look forward to next year's game. Yes, Commissioner Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mayor. As we sit here, we are awaiting a snowstorm on Wednesday night and into Thursday, just asking everybody to stay safe. Get the cars off the road when there's snow covered and please don't throw the snow back into the street. Promises to be significant snowstorm and hopefully the weather forecasters are wrong. But we will see what happens. But just everybody stay safe and stay off the street. They'll be clear. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? I'll entertain that motion now, Commissioner.
And very respectfully, I didn't mean to jump in, but Commissioner Scarpelli was kicking me under my seat. So I too would just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, happy holiday season, and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Right.
Ms. Patrako.
Hi.
Ms. Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
And the time is eight forty-nine.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.